Good evening. Thank you all for coming. This is the fifteen hundred and eighty-fifth regular meeting of the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Anne, Missouri, held at City Hall on Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M. Alderman Moreno will lead the Board with the pledge of allegiance.
I am the United States of America, and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have everybody Ivan is on the phone.
Okay, I want to inform the audience of the agendas and public speaker cards available in the back corner of the room. If a resident would like to address the board during the public comments section of the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and have it ready. I want to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Alderman and that public comments will be entertained during the specific times set aside. Okay, communications, any approval for the regular and committee meetings, please?
Some move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Hearing done, minutes are approved. We'll now open a public hearing. Our special use permit for five fifty Northwest Plaza Drive, special use permit amendment. Are there any proponents for the MTC driving school meeting? Any proponents? Does the board have any questions? Bob, you want to give us an update on that?
The P and Z board approved the request to let the truck driving school use Old Saint Charles Road from a stop sign for the remainder part of St. Anne, which has a stop sign there if Northwest Crossings going towards what, what corner?
All right, are there any opponents? Vic?
Do you want to confirm what you're doing here? This has not been approved yet or has been approved yet?
It is approved right now.
Okay, so it's only been approved through the P and Z right now?
Correct.
Okay. If you approve this, I'm completely against, you already know that, but if you approve this, you've approved something for somebody who didn't even request it. So if you approve it, you've opened that door, I want to know that if you're going to go back through all of your special use permits and change them for whatever these people want, those people want.
I don't have any intention of going back through the past. This one came up because you had issues with it.
And before it got out of my mouth, you said we will change that.
I said we will.
That's, that's really not the way.
I said we will hold a planning and zoning meeting.
Oh, no, you said we will change that, and Mr. Conley had to correct you.
Okay, well, either way, this is where we are.
Okay, well, that's what I have to say about it.
Thank you. All right, I need a first and second motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the special permit for five fifty Northwest Plaza to drive down Saint Charles Rock Road is approved. End of special meeting. Specialty Matt request for wash bucket.
Um, this is our annual event to help the community pay their electric bills, so all of the funding, thank you, all of the funding that we raised that day for car washes, the food truck and the slushy bar that would be open on the nineteenth, had to put that out there since we talked about it. Uh, all of those funds that come in will be used to pay utility bills that following Monday. So it's on a Saturday, May seventeenth, and then on that Monday, whoever would like help with their utility bills can just bring their bills in, we pay it on the spot, and we do it every year, and that's just one of our annual things that we do, so.
Okay, does the board have any questions? All right, can I get a first and a second motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, specialty bill is approved. Liquor licenses for Subrosos, one or eleven, one forty-six, Old Saint Charles Rock Road? I guess we don't need any proponents?
No.
Chris, chief, did everybody pass everything?
Zero, no problems whatsoever. Very compliant.
And this is the one that the board approved since there was two churches?
Right.
To bring the measurements down to zero.
Yeah, and the church came in and asked to?
Yes.
We do do that one. Okay. Any questions for, any motion for first and a second?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? License is approved. Are there any public comments on agenda items? Public comments on agenda items? First reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a golf course beverage cart from Eminem Golf LLC. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a golf course beverage cart from Eminem Golf LLC. Matt?
This is for the golf course, we're currently finishing up the renovation of the clubhouse, and we reorganized the snack area in there, and one of the things that came out of the discussion to do that is to get a beverage cart for the course. Usually people don't come back just to get beer, so we think that there's a, or other beverages, so this, we think this is a good thing to have, we can also use it for, we're gonna have the parties in the park down at St. Anne Park, we can use it for that, other city events, so. Just envision, just a link for the golf course.
Right. I don't play golf often, but I did wish that there was somebody driving stuff around when I did play. Does the board have any questions?
While people, while people are playing golf, it will be a part of going around? Oh, good, wow, that's great.
Most golf courses have, most golf courses have it, or if it's an eighteen hole golf course, then they usually, then they might have a separate, you know, stand out, you know, or something out there, but, you know, or nine holes, but.
We've, oh, sorry, we've also added several tournaments and several leagues to afternoon play, and normally the, the leagues play between four-thirty and seven, and sometimes the last tee time may go out and the pro shop may close, so that'll still leave some availability for drinking after the pro shop closes.
I like it. You guys are really making waves down there.
Hopefully, I think that because we, we didn't use the entire budget on, for the inside area that we have for the park rent, I think, I'm gonna try and get that money reprogrammed, the offsets and the coffee and cars.
Any other questions, board? All right, I need a first and a second motion?
Some move.
Second.
Matt, roll call?
Yes.
Hey, Singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Sparks? Can't move. Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Cronie?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four ninety becomes ordinance number thirty-three ninety-five. First reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-one, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with that Mazan Painting Company and Golf Course Bridge Painting. Chief, you said you were gonna have a second quote?
I believe that, uh, that business sent that in already, and sixty-five thousand nine hundred, uh, in the Mazan, uh, quote was for eighty-four thousand for the second option up there, which is what we're gonna go with.
Gonna make an amendment?
Okay, so I need someone to make an amendment to the ordinance?
We use, we use T and T Professional Painting.
I'll make the amendment.
Second.
Do I need to go by roll call or do they, does that?
I think they could, so the motion could state that the amendment, uh, the ordinance as amended?
Okay.
And then the roll call can be on the menu from the manual.
Okay, so, so vote on the amendment?
For this, yeah, so.
Right.
Just, maybe, does that need to be roll called?
I think, I think whoever makes the motion can just say, I vote, or I move that we approve the ordinance as amended, as so stated, you know, substituting the company, and then just have one.
Gotcha.
I need to make the amendment.
Approve the ordinance.
Approve the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on then.
Well, you need, you need, yeah.
So, second reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-one, as amended, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with T and T?
Professional Painting.
Or Golf Course Bridge Painting. Matt, did you need to say anything else?
Uh, this is, uh, the four bridges at the golf course, this was part of the grant that we got for the clubhouse, so, again, we're not paying the entire bill on it.
Okay, board, questions?
Matt, could you share the price difference between the first one and the second one?
First one was eighty-four thousand five hundred, eighty, I'm sorry, yes, eighty-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, and this one was, well, we selected, amended it to sixty-five thousand.
Thank you.
All right, we need a first and a second motion, please.
Some move.
Second.
Matt, roll call?
Hey, Singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Sparks? Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Cronie?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four ninety-one becomes ordinance number thirty-three ninety-six. First reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-two, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with FDF Plumbing for valve replacement. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-two, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with FDF Plumbing for valve replacement. Matt?
Yes, this is for the valve that is connected to the, uh, American Water, Water Meter. They need to come and replace that, and they can't do it because our valve is failed, so this will replace the valve, and so they'll come out and replace the meter.
Okay, does the board got any questions? All right, I need a first and a second motion, please.
Some move.
Burger.
Matt, roll call?
Hey, Singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Excuse, Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Cronie?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four ninety-two becomes ordinance number thirty-three ninety-seven. First reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-three, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Shortcut Lawn Care LLC for mowing and services. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-three, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Shortcut Lawn Care LLC for mowing services. Matt?
This is the company that we've used for the last five years?
Yeah, I believe so.
Five years for the mowing of the parks and, uh, certain, uh, right away, uh, strips in the city, mainly International Plaza is the big one, uh, so this, this extends it one more year. They do a good job, they haven't had any problems, and it's really difficult to get companies to do things on a timely basis, and Brian wants to keep on top of that, so.
Yeah, they do a good job. They're flexible, like if we have city events and we need to move it by day or something, they're always.
A lot of companies will just tell you, sorry.
Yeah, no, they're, they're easy to work with.
Cool. Does the board have any questions? All right, we made a first and a second motion?
Some move.
Second.
Matt, roll call?
Hey, Singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Cronie?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four ninety-three becomes ordinance number thirty-three ninety-eight. First reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-four, an ordinance establishing the compensation for certain offices commencing after the election, April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-four, an ordinance establishing the compensation for certain offices commencing after the election, April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Matt?
This is the ordinance that we discussed at the committee meeting regarding the setting the salary, uh, compensation for the chief of police, myself and for the Board of Alderman. Board Aldermans will take effect, uh, half of the board if they're reelected, uh, will take effect at the end of the month, and then maybe half would take effect if they run next year and get, get reelected.
Okay, board, any questions? All right, I need a first and a second motion?
I first. Second.
Roll call?
Hey, Singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
She can't move, she's excused. Cronie?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four ninety-four becomes ordinance number thirty-three ninety-nine. First reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-five, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a used Chevy Tahoe from the Northeast Fire District. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four ninety-five, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a used Chevy Tahoe from the Northeast Fire District. Matt?
This is to replace a vehicle, uh, that was flooded, um, we've got a, uh, offer from the Northeast Fire Protection District for a, uh, seventeen?
Seventeen, right?
Seventeen.
What's that? Yeah, seventeen, that's correct, yep. Uh, board, mayor, and we want to make sure the public knows this, we had three vehicles, they're all down, we're not replacing all three of them. The Tahoe will be purchased out of the drug forfeiture asset, uh, where we're still waiting for probably one point something million dollars, these guys are doing an amazing job, but anytime that we have to have something over three thousand dollars, whether it comes from the drug forfeiture or not, the board has to approve it, so we're replacing one of those, that is going to the evidence, who, uh, Evidence Tech, who actually lives in St. Anne, and, um, and then that car that he's driving, the old Explorer, is going to the major, who's been coming in a lot for jail issues, we're housing now for federal prisoners, who've been doing that for a while, there's been a few problems there, uh, taking his own time to going down, one guy, actually, that's a federal prisoner, we had him sit on for fourteen days, um, and he was part of having to do that, but the feds are reimbursing all of that money, so we're getting that brought back into, um, into the budget, so just wanted to make sure that's what it's being used for.
Okay, does the board have any questions? All right, I need a first and a second motion?
Some move.
Second.
Roll call?
Hey, Singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Cronie?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four ninety-five becomes ordinance number thirty-four. Looking for approval for the monthly reports and warrant list? Can I get a first and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passed. It's now time for public comment on non-agenda items, if you have any public comment on non-agenda items, and then giving your cards to Chris.
Hi, Michelle Garman, want to wait one three, say, for instance? I kind of want to know, number one, how much was spent on this? I literally got them on back-to-back days.
Was it second one? I know that one.
Two. Different.
We can pull the invoice, Marty.
And I want to know who approved the final copy?
Who approved it?
Yes.
I believe Aaron put it together with somebody who knows about the use tax, I reviewed it for accuracy as far as.
Because this, not an increase on, in sales tax for St. Anne residents, is misleading.
But it doesn't increase the sales tax?
It increases a use tax, which is applied like a sales tax to all my purchases.
But it's not a sales tax.
But that's the thing, leave that off, it's just misleading residents, residents don't understand. I thought we learned our lesson with the pool fact sheet on being clear.
Michelle, just so that you know, board, because I've already talked to you about that, um, that was taken from, um, six other municipalities that were all used, and, and that was a comment, but they made sure the lawyers and all that reviewed that, and so I, I understand you don't like it, but I'm just telling you, when he used that, it was already done and approved by all of those lawyers, so whether, I understand because you have your own opinion, get it, Michelle, uh, but just making sure that the city was covered on that.
Just because another city does it, doesn't mean that we should. We need to be transparent, we need to be as open and honest as possible with our residents, and this wasn't.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Vic?
Last time I was here, I, you didn't have my petition because of, well, for whatever reasons. Uh, I've got some numbers for you, that probably would be a smart idea if you wrote these numbers down and checked my math, but, uh, Dan told me my, my petition doesn't matter before even seeing it, told me that you said the same thing, mayor, so, uh, you probably, you two probably won't be interested in this. When I went out and looked, uh, checked on the houses south of that MTC Driving School, I knocked on one hundred thirty-four doors, I was, I got answers at fifty-eight of them, and in my old-fashioned arithmetic, that's forty-three percent, which is a large population. Of those fifty-eight households that answered, fifty, fifty-four of them signed up on the petition, that, in my old-fashioned arithmetic, is ninety-three percent. So that's, that's the number that you're dealing with of people for and against that school. I just hope you might be interested in those, and you can check, please check my math on it.
Yeah, I have a question before you leave, Vic. I have a question. If you don't mind, can you change me for a second? So you said you knocked on, um, one hundred and thirty-four doors going south, right? Going south?
In the, five streets south of, uh, MTC Truck Driving School, correct.
And out of those one hundred and thirty-four, fifty-eight of them answered the door and fifty-four signed?
That's correct, well, no, more, more than that signed, but out of the fifty, out of the fifty-eight households that I got in, got an answer from, fifty-four, at least one person out of the, those fifty-four signed.
And did they sign, and this is just, I wanted to acknowledge this, because I'm thinking south, five blocks over, are they saying that they hear that noise, five blocks over from where the trucking school live?
No, no, it goes back, uh, one, two, three, four blocks, three blocks, and then there's two streets that run east and west, or, uh, north and south, and those are, those are the one hundred and thirty-four houses that I got there, and yes, they did.
And fifty-four are saying that they, they hear the trucking school?
I don't know that, you'd have to have some.
Well, I'm saying, because you said they signed the petition, and in order to sign the petition, the petition that you, uh, you're asking people to sign is saying that the school is a nuisance and they are noisy, am I correct?
Then I guess they are agreeing, aren't they?
So, okay, I, I'm just trying to get an understanding because?
You do.
I actually, uh, went a block over for noise, and they didn't hear it, so that's why I was asking that question, and I was just only one block over, and, uh, so that's why I asked that question, I was trying to get the dynamics of where you went, so that's all I wanted, because I actually went a block over, thank you.
Chris? Board, mayor, uh, public, just so that you know, I received multiple phone calls personally, probably thirty-two residents who most wish to remain anonymous, um, that, uh, basically were pressured into signing this, so you just go over a block, pretty much just proves, and, uh, and pretty much the nastiness that you see in here, um, you know, in, in the behavior of calling people pimp and so on, is the same thing, they felt pressured, okay, and bullied, was exactly the word, to sign that, so just want to make sure that you know that.
Thank you.
Proof would be nice. Anybody else?
Excuse me, sorry, I could fill out a card.
Okay.
Um, Gail Harman, one oh six oh nine, St., Rich Crust Drive, sorry, um, I am on the planning and zoning board, and when he said just now, proof of being bullied, I was at, I am the commissioner of that board. Chairman, thank you. There was the word pimp called, and I know for a fact, you know that was worded, so name-calling at meetings, I assume probably happened when you were out soliciting, because if you're doing it at a public meeting, you're doing it out in public to prospects, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail.
Get a dictionary and look it up.
I did, I'm not going there.
Is that, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, moving on, chief, you're up.
Let's do, uh, Dalton first. Every month, we're giving out the Officer of the Month award, and I'm letting, uh, Major Carrigan and Deputy Chief George Ravens start to conduct these, doing a really good job, they're, uh, paying attention to what's really going on, so very, very good, very good, guys.
Hey, Dalton Carringer, if you please? I always like to keep these brief, there's a lot to talk about at these meetings, but, I want to read just a little bit of the submission that was submitted by his supervisors nominating him for Officer of the Month, I thought this was really good. On March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, officers received a call for flourishing at King's Food and Liquor. Upon their arrival, they located a female who stayed her boyfriend and pointed a firearm at her while she was holding her daughter. During the investigation, P.O. Carringer was able, able to determine there were several, several juveniles in the vehicle while he was pointing the firearm and screaming at the victim. Officers were able to gather information, um, on the suspect's whereabouts, and they responded to his residence and, uh, called out the SRT team, which is our tack team, they ended up taking that suspect into custody and, uh, taking custody of all those kids into protective custody. Officer Carringer then responded to San Luis County the next morning, uh, just want to read a list of the charges he got on this suspect, which is great, unlawful, unlawful use of a weapon, armed criminal action times three, endangering child welfare times three, receiving stolen property, resist, interfere with arrest for a felony, delivering a controlled substance, and unlawful possession of a firearm times two. This was just one thing that I thought stood out to me for the month of March, uh, he does a great job, he never complains, he always has a great demeanor, and he's always, uh, kind and polite to the public, which I, I can't ask enough of, so Dalton, this one's for you.
If I can get, um, Scott Klett and Commissioner Klett and Jimmy Carr, come on up. I know you've been busy, man, busy, 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 thank you for taking a couple of minutes to come on up. So anybody who doesn't know, one, uh, and the mayor appoints all the police commissioners, and, um, not only have they been good friends of mine and went to school together, they are constantly doing positive things, I'll take this. I'll take this one real quick, inside, you're going to see a gift card for you guys, and I got to tell you, when I went to the FBI National Academy, being blessed enough to be able to go there, one of the things, an instructor came in, and we had a police officer, won't name who that was, and they're all in the rank of lieutenant and higher. And he was coming in, as typical, putting his shoulders down and all that, and one of the things that hit me is a comment that was made by a high, highly respected, not only an agent, okay? But this guy said, you know what, you bring the weather, right? We know those people who are always just come in there, they never say thank you, they're always negative, right? And then you have others that come in, don't ever ask for recognition, work hard, come in, are always, are always complimentary of people, and you can, you can just feel that, right? That's you two, you two consistently. The Christmas gifts that we have been blessed by your contact, everything that you do, every year I would like to do this, and I know the last time, we moved you into tears, you do a lot of stuff, you take a lot of heat. When you're in the position that you are, right, people are going to be critical, right? And it's those few that do nothing, by the way, want to come and complain, but if you ask, watch, just watch the demeanor, right? Do nothing positive, and it doesn't take long for people to see that reputation. On the flip side, for both of these, a prior employee who's now dispatching, making more money, and found, got a great reputation, and obviously Scott Collette, the Commissioner, who have been amazing human beings, living here in the community, caring about what happens. I just can't thank you both enough, I really, really mean that. You guys take a lot of heat and continue to press forward, it's always, it's always impressive, I'm very emotionally touched by what you guys do, whether it's coming out, collecting brush, helping with the flood, with the other policemen, helping us with our, the mouse races and stuff. We would not be here if it wasn't for both of you, I'm sincere in saying that. Both of you guys are getting a chief's letter, a plaque of appreciation for Scott Collette and Jimmy Carr for your ongoing efforts to support the San Antonio benevolent association dare program outreach projects with better, which better the city of San Antonio and surrounding communities. Not only do they not do this for St. Anne, they do this for Troy, the North County Co-op, who I've seen, they have eight cities, right? Wellston, Pine Lawn, some of the most in-need residents, and watching those children when you go, it is awesome, it is cool. And so I just want to take the time, we have a lot of great people here who do a lot of good things, and you guys head that up, and I will forever be grateful in my last four years and by then thirty-two years of service here. Sincerely, thank you guys so much, I hope you guys take your significant other out to a nice, nice dinner, you guys deserve it, and you're very, very incredible human beings.
I really, I want to say I really appreciate this, but I also want to say that the stuff that we do, we couldn't do without a team behind us, and we have some of the greatest people that help us with the mouse races. Brooke Green, who works here, she's there every year for the last ten years. Callan Rumps' wife bartends for us, he's a police officer here. Joe Keneely back there is with me nonstop during the mouse races, so I, I'm appreciative of this, but there's a lot of people behind the scene that do a lot of work that make me look good. My wife is a huge part, I couldn't do it, if my wife wasn't here, we wouldn't have the mouse races. So I just couldn't do it without her, and during Christmas time, I spend a lot of time away from my house, and my wife puts up with that, and that's a huge thing, and I just want to recognize and let people know, there's a lot of people behind the scene that make us look good, so. Just thanks, thanks to everybody that helps out, thanks, Joe, you appreciate this too.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. If I can have Carrigan stay up here, and by the way, some of the people back too, they're going to be recipients of stuff next month too, by the way, I know you guys are here supporting people. This is really important also, before we close out, on a positive note, we have Major Carrigan here, Deputy Chief George Ravens, I'd actually like Bobby Vogel, Ryan Meyer, and Chris Rogers, can you come forward, please? So with the blessing, of course, I wouldn't have been able to do this without Matt and the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, so thank you, all of you, for always being receptive when I call on you and helping me out. I know you guys are very busy throughout your daily schedule, so thanks, and of course, always coming, answering people's calls in the middle of the night and so on, you guys are elected for a reason, you're one of the best, I've been here for a long time, not as long as some of the older people, but I will tell you this, it's one of the best boards that I've seen. Even talking to my mom, and I'm telling you, it's one of the best sincerely, not bitching, if you disagree with something, you're working together, and at a time like this, when there's a lot, I mean, a lot of stuff, whether it's about Trump, Biden, president politics, you are, you are, I'm in awe of watching every one of you what you do, sincerely, I'm in awe, so thank you. First of all, these are letters of appreciation to these fives, five, and we're going to have Chris Rogers, Ryan Meyer, Bobby Vogel, we got Blake Carrigan and George Ravens, for your continued efforts that you guys go above and beyond to support the residents of San Antonio and enrich the lives of those in our city and neighboring counties and communities. Let me start off by saying this, there is so much stuff that goes on that we don't say thank you enough, Chris, you take a lot of heat, those phone calls, believe me, I see it, I hear about it, even from Vinciana, and I tell you what, that is you, sincerely, thank you, I know you take a lot of heat about stuff, you continue to press forward when things are tough, it's very, it does not go unnoticed, there is a nice gift card in there for you to take, John, your better half, hopefully, to a nice steak dinner, you deserve it, thank you. The little calls that you call and say, hey, so-and-so, the seventy-year-old lady the other day needed a refrigerator moved, I can go on and on for stuff that we go on our off time and go and help put it, literally, put in cabinets, fix faucets, all of that stuff, free of charge, we love doing that for people. That's what makes San Antonio who we are, sincerely, we're not perfect, we're striving for perfection, but once again, you always know who those ones who just want to be bitches and complainers, and the other ones who are always thankful, and I am definitely thankful for what you do, Chris, thank you, thank you. Ryan, every time, you just helped the mayor and I with the sign being removed, even though that was something so significant, you have no idea what the Kung-Fu master who called and was like, you got that done, you and the mayor, and it only took like three days, when I've been trying forever, but little things like that, helping, offering services, getting permission of the city admin and the mayor, those are the things, why who we are, why we also stay elected? Because we do care on our off time, you being a resident here, before your mom passed and me painting your house for free was, was just the relationships of stuff like that is untouchable, nobody can do it, the most cannot do it, it's why we are who we are in San Antonio, and I, sincerely. So thank you so much for all of what you're doing, including being a new leader of public services, it's very, very, it's very rewarding to watch you grow up into a fine young man. Bobby Vogel, we had a SWAT, SWATting call, and if anybody does not know what SWATting is, it's on the rise, so what's happening is, kids, adults, they're on Xbox, they're going to get back at somebody. Twice now this has happened, where the officers had to go over to San Antonio Lane, at the end of San Antonio, I don't want to use their names, and all of a sudden, this is the call. Oh my God, it's nine-one-one, he just killed his wife and four children inside the residence, please come now, officers hearing that, right? We've seen those things, we've witnessed those things, we have done major K-Squad doing those things, they come, the first thought process of the lieutenant, boot the door in, they have a three-year-old child that could still be alive, they boot the door in, go in, and now all of a sudden, the wife is not dead, the four children are not dead. Now the children are crying, screaming, and we're having to comfort them off of, I don't call it a mistake, it's a human behavior that we go in first, right, and trying to stop evil from happening every day. So that takes its course for these men and women and stuff, what they do, and then to turn around and listen, some places have been sued for millions, right? Me going up there, I just got home, seven o'clock at night, and going up to the scene, and having the guy that already knows Blake, which was awesome, knows the police department, and is very upset, we kicked the door in. So things that Bobby and Blake, without question, go, pay for a door, pay for handles, put it in, fix the door jamb, three or four hours that night after getting off of work, it's things like that, that happens every day, I'm telling you, I see it, I witness it. Thank you, Bobby, you do that all, so many times where, since you, since I've been blessed enough for the board and Matt and the mayor to bring you here, you have changed that position, unbelievable. And for George, for you coming in, you're welcome, it's the truth, it's why we are who we are, and that's not bragging, I see, I know most everybody out here, and we all make up San Antonio for a reason, people who have been here for a long time and keep this city moving forward. And you two that are going to hopefully take the charge when I'm gone here in the next four years, watching you grow, care, and picking up those things that, listen, very few people can do, okay? And that's not bragging, it's a lot of being tired, having your family frustrated with you because you're giving up your time and your, your home time, your, you can go out to a bar, you can go get dinner, blah, 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 and you're not being able to do that because you are coming here and taking care of problems because you want to, not because you have to. So all five of you, don't you ever forget that, you do that because you want to, not just because it's a job and you have to. So they are all getting that with a nice gift card, I'm forever grateful, thank you, all five of you, and I know we have many more coming up and to recognize, but we need to keep doing this, we're going to survive as a municipality and be the frontrunner for other municipalities that are actually asking us for, to take them over. So thank you so much, community, for listening, Mayor, Board, everyone, thank you so much. Matt? Mayor, Board, thank you so much, and community, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I'm sure, I know I do, and I assure the board, again, at least one thousand seven, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you to our employees.
Thank you, thank you.
Board, Matt does have one more thing he needs to bring forward.
Yeah, we've got a legal call today, she lives at three nine two five Wright, and she's got a sore lateral issue. And, you know, so we pass an ordinance regarding the, you owe us money, we look at permits, she's got an issue where she didn't, she hasn't paid her taxes, her two thousand twenty-four taxes yet, she intends to, she's current, other than that, but she wants to apply for the sewer level program. So, you know, she does have stuff coming up out of her basement, so the question is, do you want to waive that with the understanding that she'll pay it this year at some point?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just a motion in a second.
Motion. I need a motion in a second to waive the taxes for this lady for the shooting.
Second.
So in favor?
Up there.
Aye.
Any opposed? Take care of it. All right, I need a first and a second for adjournment, please. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned. Take care of your luck.